Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Call's workshop on October 11, 2023. She's advocates for making government better. So the tweaking that we can do in the future of the laws or whatever. She's a great person.
I don't know about that. One vote, just remember.
Representative Knight was on vacation.
For some of the schools. Can we zoom him in?
I didn't know this morning.
Okay, so he's got the link. Okay, good.
He knows this stuff better.
I know. It was good to say it.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Call's workshop on October 11, 2023. I want to recognize a special guest. We have Representative Karen Mateeak here today, so we're glad to have you here today. Thank you. First item of business is the presentation of the different option legal government committees have to levy sales tax, host, lost, most, splost, et cetera. City manager does a honorable address and introduces Ryan Bowerson, Bowersocks, and Michael McPherson with the Georgia Municipal Association.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
I'm going to stay right here so I can just sort of tell you what is in the agenda item packet, just by brief summary. As you all know, most of you know, in 2002, we negotiated our loss distribution at 60/40, where 60% were taken on.
We can't hear you. Jessica, we can't hear you back.
Okay, hold on.
Start all over.
As most of you know, in 2002, the city and county negotiated a split of loss for 60% to the county and 40% to the city. In 2012, again, after 10 years, which is required by law, we negotiated again, and that adjustment was changed by 0.5%, where the county now receives 59.5% of loss and the city receives 40.5%. On June 22 of this year, we received a letter addressed to Mayor Holberg from Chairperson Davis of the county calling for the commencement of negotiations, which was scheduled for July 15 at 9:00 a.m. That initial meeting discussed the negotiation process and the timing of the negotiations. And then the city commissioners present instructed myself and staff to negotiate and negotiate with the county at its July 18 meeting. The county, by way of resolution, directed the county manager to work with City of Griffin staff to conduct SCS and loss negotiations over the next 45 days. On August 24, members of each governing body and the staff met to attempt negotiations. However, at that meeting, the county informed us that they were not going to pursue loss, they were going to eliminate loss. And so at that point, they were going to introduce a splost in May of 2023. But we are required by law to hire a mediator if we cannot agree on loss distributions, which we did. We attempted mediation on September 26 of 2022, but after six hours of mediation, we were unsuccessful. Both parties did make several offers and counteroffers. There was not just one offer made, as what's been contrary, contrarily posted on social media. And then it's October 3, 2022, special call meeting for purposes of a final public hearing on the military. The county presented an option for a host, which would disallow the use of loss in our community. And because of this new discussion, because host is new to us, because it has not been brought up in our mediation, I felt that it was important that all of you learn what that is. So we've asked Ryan and Michael to come and speak with us from Georgia Municipal Association about what a host looks like for our community versus a loss, the impacts that it has based on law from the General Assembly. So Ryan, I will turn it over to you.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Mic on to start. Soft speakers all probably. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear a thing. Yeah, here you go.
Test on, test on, better? Okay, a little better. All right. Mayor Holberg, thank you for inviting me this morning. Members of the commission, special thanks to Drew and Jessica for organizing our appearance this morning. As Jessica mentioned, my name is Ryan Bowersocks. I'm the Assistant General Counsel at the Georgia Municipal Association. I am joined by Michael McPherson, who is a member of Services Consultant with GMA. We both have served and previously served on the Government Relations Team additionally at GMA, and have both served at various times as the revenue finance lobbyists for the Georgia Municipal Association. We were asked today to just provide a little bit of a black letter of law regarding the sales tax state in Spalding and Griffin and some various options that are also out there, some other taxes that do exist, and just provide some education on this various area of law. It's very nice to, this early in the morning, draw a crowd for sales tax. Generally, that is not something I get to do. All right. So starting a little bit with just an overview of Georgia's sales tax. I know this is very basic for many of you, just want to start off, make sure we're all on level playing field before we start getting into some of the more nitty gritty areas of this law. The Georgia State Sales Tax is divided into two parts. There is a state sales tax rate set at 4%. This revenue collected goes to the State General Fund. And then you have the local sales taxes, which range from 2% up to 5% combined with the state sales tax. The highest is in several consolidated governments at 5% now. Generally, these sales taxes, with a couple of exceptions, are collected on a countywide basis. And unlike the state sales tax, which is at 4%, where the entire fund rolls into the State General Fund, the percentages of the individual sales taxes at the local level are designated for specific purposes as you add those pennies up. Sorry, I'm operating two screens here. All right. So Georgia's local sales taxes. So in general, the General Assembly authorizes a tax, and then the local governing authority follows the necessary procedure put into OCGA to provide a ballot question to the residents of that jurisdiction. If it is approved by voters in a referendum, there's a certain time period before it is then implemented, collected through DOR, remitted back to the local level for these specific purposes provided in law. Title 48, Chapter 8 provides for the sales and use taxes of the state and the local level. Articles 2 through 5B address local taxes. An important provision within Chapter 8 of Title 48 is OCGA 4886, which provides a 2% limit on local sales taxes. As I mentioned, though, these range up to 5%. There are several exceptions placed into law from that 2% cap. These have to be just kept in mind as you are adding pennies. You need to make sure that if you are rising above that 2%, there are the exceptions built into law. So moving on to Spalding County and Griffin sales taxes. From DOR's website, I can see y'all are at a rate of 7% currently. As mentioned previously, this includes the 4% state sales tax. There is a 1% education special purpose local option sales tax, an East Floss, a 1% single county transportation special purpose local option sales tax, a T-Sloss, single county T-Sloss, and then you have the 1% local option sales tax, the loss, probably the most common of the local option sales taxes. So I'm going to go briefly through those three pennies before moving to do other potential sales taxes. First, you have the East Floss, there's a rate of 1% as mentioned. The revenue is designated for capital improvements for educational purposes only, similar to a sploss, which I believe y'all had running up until early this year. This is just used for educational upgrades, constructions, facility improvement, technological improvements. It comes from an approved project list that was approved when the sales tax was birthed. All right. The single county T-Sloss, again, at a rate of 1%, very similar to a sploss, capital improvements. This is just for transportation purposes, all outlined within state law. Important to note, similar to all their sales taxes, there are benefits when an intergovernmental agreement is in place between counties and qualified municipalities regarding rate and length of time that the sales tax can run. And finally, moving on to the local option sales tax, rate of 1%. The revenue is split between the county and qualified municipalities. I keep putting qualified municipalities in quotations. Each one of these code sections does have different definitions of qualified municipalities. It'll become important in a minute here. For loss is providing three of six services. So the revenue is split between the county and qualified municipalities according to revenue certificate that is based on provided eight criteria in law. There are several triggers to renegotiate this distribution certificate, including the decennial census, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, given the time. The revenue important is used, is split in the general fund for the use of the supplementary, the services under the supplementary powers paragraph of the Georgia Constitution, and provide a property tax relief in the form of a military rule that, which is demonstrated on the property tax bill. So with that foundation, I'm going to move now briefly through some of the other sales taxes that I was asked to provide an overview of this morning. The two that we will be discussing today is the municipal option sales tax, the most, and the homestead option sales tax, also known as the host. So, starting to talk about the municipal option sales tax. This is authorized under Title 48, Chapter 8, Article 4. It was first placed in law about 2004. It allows a qualified municipality to levy a 1% tax for water and sewer projects and costs. Important to note, under this code section, is the definition of qualified municipality. It is limited to a municipality with an average wastewater flow of 85 million gallons per day, or, as a revision was placed in law in 2020, a wastewater system that connects into a municipality that averages 85 million gallons per day. So what that basically limits the municipal option sales tax to, under current law, is to use the 1% revenue from this tax for water and sewer projects, and is limited right now to Atlanta, which was the original purpose under the 2004 law to upgrade their systems. And then it was expanded in recent years to College Park, Eastwood, and Hayville, all of which approved the ballot question recently. This, it's important also to note, along with the extension, there was some speculation regarding how these systems should be operated, should be upgraded, and generally, they are through enterprise funds and fees collected through them. It was noted in the governor's sounding statement, this was kind of a rare exception to this because of the unique situation these three cities were in and their full integration with Atlanta's system. So from there, I'm going to move on to the homestead option sales and use taxes. The hosts, there are three of them under law. They are authorized under Title 48, Chapter 8, Article 2A. Part 1 provides for the homestead option sales and use tax, the original, and host. Placed a couple of years previously in law, we had the equalized homestead option sales and use tax, the E-host, and the revised homestead option sales and use tax. Those three parts, we'll get through kind of how they differ in a minute here. But, starting off with the original host provided for in Part 1 of that code section, starting off some just preliminary requirements regarding levying a homestead option sales tax, specifically provided in law, if a county is levying a loss, they are not, they are prohibited from also levying a host, is kind of a one or the other deal. And then there is additional procedure required in levying a host because of its unique nature in providing a homestead tax exemption in addition to a sales tax. It creates a two-step process where you do need the resolution by the governing authority of the county, but you will also need a local act by the General Assembly, because that is required under our constitution to create a homestead property tax exemption. And then, similar to the rest of the sales taxes, it will then go on the ballot to be approved by the voters. So, let's talk about the use of the homestead option sales and use tax, the revenue, how it can be used. At least 80% of it is used as a property tax exemption from taxes levied for county purposes on homesteaded properties countywide. Then up to 20% is used for, termed as capital outlay projects. So this 20% number then dictates the 80% number. So we need to start off with figuring out this 20% of the revenue. The rate is set by the county governing authority of how much will be settled aside of the total amount, up to 20%, determined by the county, how much will go to the capital outlay projects, and is then distributed out in two sets. First is an equalization amount, what equalization amount, which is determined using the difference in the county military in incorporated area versus the unincorporated area. It basically recognizes that oftentimes in incorporated areas, the county taxes will not be as high as unincorporated areas, and it is a provision to the municipalities for that leveling out. And then, once that amount is used, the access funds are then distributed through the counties and the municipalities based on the total homestead digest. Otherwise, there is the caveat of law that this distribution can be based on an intergovernmental agreement otherwise. Again, up to 20% is a maximum. All right, perfect. So that then leads us into the homestead exemption portion of it. At minimum, 80% can go all the way up to 100 potentially. It's a reduction liability from taxes levied solely for county purposes, and the tax relief is only on homesteaded properties, not commercial, not rental, only homesteaded properties. This is figured by taking a homestead factor, which is a percentage. It's created based on the revenue collected in the previous year, or it's used with the revenue collected in the previous year, and then the amount that is set aside for capital outlay projects. You then apply it to the homesteaded properties by subtracting all other homesteaded exemptions and multiplying it by the assessed value. If, when all this is then done, when you have the capital outlay projects completed, when you have the homestead exemption applied, if it covers completely the property, there is a provision that allows for a rollback of the county military if there are funds left over. So, with the original host covered, the other two hosts in law, just want to briefly go over these, are the equalized homestead option sales tax and the revised homestead option sales tax. The equalized homestead option sales tax is available only in counties that are previously levying a host, so that original host discussed, and are also levying a part of sales tax. This essentially only applies to DeKalb County. The provisions in here would then allow the county to simultaneously create a host and a sploss. Similar, so you have the capital outlay projects and the homestead exemption. Both must be approved by voters on the ballot, or neither takes effect. And then the revised homestead option sales and use tax, available, the counties levying a host under Part 1, the previous host we discussed, but it does require a petition signed by 10% of the electors to make this change, in addition to then going as ballot question. So the E-host and the R-host operate a little differently from host in the way their revenue is used. These two hosts provide a rollback up to an elimination of the military on county property taxes for homesteaded properties. If at that point there are remaining funds, you are supposed to equally use them for a rollback of the military on property taxes on homestead property, the unincorporated area, of solely unincorporated taxes and of municipal property taxes. So just to close, a quick review of kind of what the situation is, I take it, is a little bit of a comparison of the local option sales tax versus the homestead option sales tax. The loss, the revenue is distributed based on agreement between the city and the county. It provides a military rollback on municipal and county property taxes, and the rollback applies to all property tax, homesteaded and non-homesteaded. The original host, which is kind of the option, only option available out there, is the 80% to 100% exemption provided just from county, property taxes for county purposes. It reduces the property tax only on homesteaded properties across the county. And then, just a brief, as loss is already in law, it's been in law for several decades, a continuation would be just of January 1, the new rate being applied, or the new distribution being applied, but the 1% continuing to be collected. The timeline on the host is a little more uncertain, as it has to go through the General Act of, or the local act of the General Assembly, signature by the governor, put on the ballot question, and then certain periods up until there. We're talking several months before the revenue be collected on a host. So with that, I'm happy to take some questions. I know, Michael, do you want to?
Ryan, can you go into a little detail, just for clarification, homestead loss gives rollback benefit not only to homeowners, but also to business not under occupied versus the host tax is more targeted for owner occupied?
Yes, sir. Mayor Holberg, you are exactly correct. The loss is a general all property military rollback, where the host is an exemption only applied to homesteaded properties, which is owner occupied, is the primary residence. Businesses would not receive this rollback, this exemption, along with rental properties would also not receive that exemption.
Thank you. Michael?
Per your question, Mr. Mayor, the difference there is that it applies to the county military rate only, where loss applies to both the county and the city military. So Ryan gave a great overview of the sales tax code by and large, and now I want to talk to you just a little bit about the effects that have been known, but sales tax in general and what it means to local governments. So with sales tax, it's collected by all the folks that come into your jurisdiction and buy byproducts. And so it pays into your tax base not only by your residents, but by those travelers coming in now. All local governments need flexibility in their revenues. They have to have flexibility. A diverse revenue base is the best defense against downturns in the market. There's volatility when it comes to, when it comes to sales tax, but abhorrent taxes is much steadier across the board, because it takes longer to adjust to the market. So, lost, local option sales tax is a dollar for dollar rollback, literally. Every dollar that you raise in that local option sales tax is a dollar that you do not have to raise in abhorrent tax, the county or the city. With the host, only being for property, for homesteaded properties, both the city and the county lose the funding and the flexibility. Ryan talked about the 20% in capital outlay as a, I guess, an option for the county to consider, but that would be pegged to capital outlay projects, which doesn't get to the fact that you have to pay for the maintenance and upkeep of those projects later. County makes, the only option for the county to make up for this revenue loss is by increasing the abhorrent on all other taxable properties. And so with that, I'd like to point out, this study that was done in 2015, it is, it is from Georgia State, the Center for State and Local Finance, and it speaks to both the experiences in DeKalb and Rockdale Counties. There's only two quotes that I want to read. I think Jessica and Mr. Willen have this to distribute to you.
We got it on our, in our package.
You have it. There is, there are plenty of quotes that are relevant to your situation here, when there are folks considering a host. But two of them I want to read to you right now, is that this places businesses at a competitive disadvantage with businesses in other counties, which can lead to reduced economic development within the county. At a time when we're competitive beyond belief across the board in Georgia, especially when you're anywhere near areas of growth like you are, that is probably the last thing that you want to do to yourself. And then, the very last, very last sentence is telling. "The host does not appear to be a sufficient source of capital funding on its own and should not be levied as a replacement or substitute for a loss or a sploss." It's pretty plain that the, that this study on the existing hosts in the few counties that had chosen to levy it has not panned out the way that I think it may have been promised when it was designed. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, take any questions that you have, but I just wanted to point out those.
Do the board members have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
To one of the, yes, this is Ms. Flowers, sorry. It pertains to one of the slides in the first presentation. It was the one that offered up what the formula was for how the rates are distributed, I think. I was wondering if it would be possible for us to be given a crude example of what those numbers would look like, just so I could have some tangible example. When, I think it talked about like what the previous budget was, and that formula was a little difficult for me to comprehend.
So, I did look at the, your previous years, fiscal years, 1% local option revenues, and I think it was $12.7 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So, we don't have the homestead revenue figure for properties within the county, so we can't really speak to what it would look like. But, the revenue, the sales tax at almost 13 million ain't going up at present. I mean, it's just a matter of whether or not that is able to cover the value of the homesteaded property within the county.
That would affect the city, is that right now we bring in about 4.2, last year, $4.2 million in property tax, we bring in a little over $5 billion in loss revenue. Our military is, right, it's just shy of 7.1 mils to bring in that $4.2 million. So to make up that $5 million, we have to almost increase property tax 10 mils on city residents, that's for that city homeowners, city rental property, city businesses. So, to raise that 5 point, plus minus a million dollars would be a dramatic, in staff, in commission decision, during where we go in the future as a city.
And you really don't have many other options.
Correct. Other than raising utility rates or things like that. Does that answer your question, Ms. Flowers, a little bit?
Yes, yes, that helps some.
Are there any questions or comments, the staff, anything else?
No, I think Ryan and Michael did a great job, of course, showing what that looks like at a statewide level, but then also sort of, I think that most recent example is what it would do for us as a city. So I think that that is well presented and obviously shows quite the, I mean, it's a complicated issue. One thing that I would point out is that, I think what's in Ryan's slides, the law even contemplates that the military for a county property tax, whether incorporated versus unincorporated, should be vastly different because of your. unincorporated, should be vastly different because of your special service districts. In our county, we only have fire that is separated out. That is why when we talk about service delivery strategy, it is so intertwined, because you can deal with that either through your IGA with lost distribution or through special service districts. We have only dealt with that with fire. So that's another thing that sort of brings us to the forefront now, because our service delivery strategy is due at the end of this month. So although lost and what we decide to do there as a community is not due until December 30th, this, this matter is pressing today.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioner? Gentlemen, we thank you for making your trip to Griffin, Georgia this morning, and we appreciate your service to Georgia. Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Hi, Mr. Holbert.
Hi, Mr. McCord. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to make sure that we do not miss heard a comment that what is good for the city. I just want to make sure we understand we want to do what's good for our entire community. And I just think losing lost is not good for our community as a whole. It seems to begin lost that we're city residents and county residents, but everyone that lives in the city is a county resident. And hopefully that does not get lost in, in this whole equation. And I just want us to make sure, at least I can speak for myself, that I'm going to do whatever is going to be feasible for the entire community. And not to put any undue pressure on any businesses, on any homeowners, any property owners, any landlords, of people who, that own rental property. I just don't think is, our community is structured in a way to try and separate us out. So I for one, hope that we can do whatever possible to make sure we protect our community. That's all I have.
Mr. McCord. Anybody else? Well, we want to thank everybody for coming out today. Again, we've got until the end of this month to negotiate service delivery strategy with the county. Consequences is that we lose our local qualified government status, both city and county, if it's not agreed upon, which means that we lose great opportunities for lower interest rates on JVA loans, as well as community block grants and other opportunities that benefit all the citizens of Griffin's Fall County. We then have until the end of this year, to December 30th, to negotiate lost tax, the distribution, or if it's decided upon the county to let it expire, then consequences for the city ourselves, just for this fiscal year, July 1 through June, or January 1 through June 30th, is roughly $2.5 million shortfall in regards to our budget. So that's where at. Look forward to future discussion with everybody, and thank you, Ryan and Michael, for coming today. And Representative Ateyak, always a pleasure. Thank you. With that being said, consider executive session pursuant to CGA Section 151421 for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending and potential litigation settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee, or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Quick motion. Motion by Mr. Tinsley, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, please join us in the back. We'll take a three-minute break, and then we'll go back there.
The motion by Mr. Tinsley. Set the record to adjourn our meeting. All say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please.